Did you get appointed or did we elect you?
Well, I didn't guess I'm.
You didn't.
I don't know.
You didn't?
Yeah.
No, I got appointed.
Okay.
It's like you're my god if you can point it.
In battle out next time. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
I'm in Emmerich.
Here.
Max Emmerich.
Yes.
Neville.
Here.
Phillips.
Smoak.
Here. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to first recognize some of our guests we have with us tonight. Uh, the first being Mr. Andy Andrew Meister from Market on the Hill, the Market on the Hill Co-op. Uh, he contacted me and I told him that I would give him an opportunity to speak about some liquor licensing stuff. So, uh, Andy, if you have.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I'm on the.
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt you. You're just getting started. A little background. I printed off some stuff. If you guys were able to look at that. I know this is kind of last minute, but, uh, this is, this is obviously up for discussion. We can talk about it here this, this coming month. But, uh, these are the definitions of the liquor licenses and on the second page it has the limit of how many are allowed within city limits. And that is what we are here to discuss tonight. All right, you go ahead.
Um, we're, I'm on the board for Market on the Hill. We've talked, we've been kind of going around and around on, um, ways that we can appease community members, um, ways that the, the Hill can, the, the Market on the Hill can, um, kind of get into, um, the grocery environment, but as well as possibly offering crap beers from local, local stores. Um, we talked about the possibility of having, um, you know, local wineries come in, maybe have a taste testing. I had a hard time finding a way that, that the liquor license would apply to what's available. Specifically because we, we really only want a package license. But we would like you guys to maybe entertain the idea of, um, us being able to, to have an occasional, uh, wine tasting event over there where we can draw customers in, um, into the store, looking for opportunity to also kind of market, uh, other local businesses, small town businesses in the area, so. Uh, but I did fill out the application. Uh, mostly I just wanted to come see if you guys had any questions about that. But I did want to suggest or have you guys look into or consider alternative options because they're kind of a unique, uh, situation where we're not solely going to have package. I would like for that other, uh, opportunity, but, you know, I guess they understand. That's not, that's that great, so. I think one of the options on the liquor license was, uh, a special event. And so I don't know if that classifies as that, but, um, I appreciate you giving me time and that's kind of what I'm here for.
Were you looking to serve on, you're looking to serve on the premise from time to time or full time or?
No, to time to time, you know, may not even be once every, every few months. But we just would like the opportunity to, uh, to kind of build that into our plans with the store itself. To, you know, to provide, uh, another resource for other local businesses to, to offer, you know, their wine and beer. But ultimately, yeah, just package license.
Okay, okay. So I, I printed this off because, uh, right now we are at the limit of Class A or B, which is a, which is a license to consume, consume on the premise. Uh, there is always the opportunity to, uh, apply for a special event license. Which I would probably grant that, you know, as long as it's, uh, from time, you know, only from time to time and, you know, I want you to try to get away from the $700, you know, and say it's spending $10 each time. You can't have more than 70 a year, right?
Right.
Uh, there is one package license still available. Shall not exceed, here it is. The sum of Class A and Class B shall not exceed three, which we are at that limit. If you are only looking for a package at this time, it looks like it should be able to be granted. Because that number will not exceed seven, the total numbers of licenses to exceed seven. So do we have any questions or does everybody understand what's in that code or?
What are the places that currently sell package?
Uh, the only people that have a package license are Casey's and the, um, the other.
Gas Depot.
Gas station.
Okay.
Gas Depot, yes. And the other, the Legion has a, uh, club license and then the Lucky Lager Pizza Man in the Brickyard all have a Class A. Bringing the total number to six, which means one still available with a package still available to be had. Anything else on that? I will probably be granting that package license as soon as we go through the application.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, more guests? Mr. Schaafnacker?
Uh, yeah. I'm Scott Schaafnacker, I'm your representative on the kind of board. I'm just, uh, stopping in because I haven't been to one of your meetings in a while. I see you got some new council members, so thank you for serving and I see something on your faces. Just stopping, um, one to request that you put on your agenda to endorse, endorse the courthouse referendum sometime between now and the primary election and, uh, on March 17th. And if you have any questions regarding anything going on in county, whether it be the election or specifically courthouse referendum, I'm here to answer.
Is there any difference in the courthouse referendum from when it was on the ballot last time?
Yes, um, we made it specifically. We changed it from, uh, uh, public safety tax increase for the same amount to a, uh, specifically for courthouse. We also capped it, capped it with a sunset clause for a maximum of 20 years. And this, we did create a small promotional video that we have out there on our website. You guys can go see it right now. I believe I shared it on my webpage as well. So that's, that's the change to the, to the actual question on the ballot. The change, the other change is, um, before, we didn't really have a plan as to how we were going to allocate the money. And since then, we've been in contact with a gentleman. His name is Bill Walters. He's from, uh, southwest Ohio. He's done many courthouse restorations, other libraries, other, other things. And he's put together, uh, building specs and he's kind of triaged and made a, um, phases as to what, what we need to do. The courthouse has been there and it's been in service for well over a hundred years. And what we want to do is take a holistic approach to keep it in service for at least that much longer. A lot of the stuff we would be doing would be increasing its efficiency for HVAC, driving down the operating costs over the years. Um, while also, uh, upgrading and building egresses for the basement to utilize more space to where we could eliminate some ancillary buildings such as the general library, so.
Is there any way you could maybe provide us with, uh, you know, what type of resolution you're looking for maybe in writing and maybe a, uh, copy of exactly how the question on the ballot's going to read?
Absolutely.
That would probably give our, our aldermen a little bit better idea of what they're endorsing.
Yeah. And like I said, I just wanted to come here and introduce it and see what you guys wanted. We have been reaching out to different organizations, all the different board members have been reaching out to their townships and their city, uh, governing bodies. Sam, I'll get that for you so you can, uh, put it on your agenda. What kind of deadline, when is your next meeting?
Uh, the next meeting would be in two weeks. It'd be the, uh, it's like the 25th.
All right. Target to within nine, I believe.
What did you say the percentage increase of the sales tax rate would be?
Eight point five percent.
So half a percent, so.
Well, fifty, a half a dollar for every hundred dollars spent, yeah.
So, uh, when we were talking last, one of another event I attended, you spoke about, uh, methods that could alleviate the tax burden.
Yeah.
Refresh my mind on that idea.
I can.
Okay.
Um, and there was, I don't know, it was either you or Matt were there. It was at the, um.
Economic Development.
Economic Development, yeah. I was thinking about ways as to, because for economic development, uh, increasing your sales tax kind of lies in the face of, of increasing economic development. So, let's see. Uh, and. How do I state that? You wanted us, you wanted us to, to, to give grants to the library, fire department in the event that they asked for it. Yes. Thank you, Andy, for refreshing my memory. So, yes, I was, I was suggesting that because of the economic development, they have grant money that if any were to go unused or if, uh, the lib, a library district or park district, uh, timed it correctly to where they could come to economic development and request a certain amount, uh, probably use the word statement. Um, but a certain amount to defray a levy increase, uh, from happening on property taxes.
Well, it's just another way to try to minimize the impact as you were saying about the.
Yeah, and I understand, I mean, hearing that for the first time, a layman would kind of contend that, wow, it might sound like you're Bobby Peter, Dave Paul. But it would just be to, to balance it out for the business owners. Thanks, Andy. Is there anything else?
Any questions for Scott?
If, uh, I'll just be here for a little later in the meeting. Has anything you can ask me after this, send over what you got.
Right.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Uh, moving on to the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes and the claims and accounts.
A E P Inter D, $2,760.53. Amarin, $1,259.35. Big B Agro, $613.50. Casey's General Store, $1,355.32. Compass Minerals, $7,697.89. Farmers Bank, $1,336.2. I M B, $4,064.40. I M B Visa, $920.54. O'Reilly Auto Parts, $978.60. Jason Wakeman, $1,150. Water Solutions, $1,573.80.
So those are some, uh, pretty major repairs on the oh-three and oh-five Chevy.
Yep.
Matt?
Yes.
Repairs that need needed or, I mean, I don't want to just, as long as it's something, you know, that we're not nickel and diming, right? I guess for lack of a better word.
No, they were definitely needed repairs.
I guess that really, my comment really was, I wasn't judging whether or not, I, I trust that you know when they need repairs. But always keep in mind, you know, if we, if we need to get something better, so we're not throwing money at repairs, always keep that in mind. You would know the formula to.
I do.
Is there any, uh, questions on the claims and accounts or the minutes?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion. Second by Phillips. Roll call please.
I'm in Emmerich.
Yeah.
Max Emmerich.
Yes.
Neville.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there any public comments on the agenda items? Officer reports, Mr. West.
Um, everything's going pretty good. Um, they were going through the schools. I've got an intern right now that I'm familiar with in college that I'll have till probably about April, May, so I'm showing him some stuff. Um, we did have some break-ins down at the storage unit the other day, so. Just kind of keep that in mind, keep things locked, lights on at night. But other than that, that's all I have.
Anybody have anything for Tony?
Public works? Uh, several things. Uh, in reference to our ongoing enforcement project, I spoke with Justin Reese and paperwork is back submitted to Sealy Railroad and sitting on somebody's desk there. So as quick as that moves, it'll be as quick as we can move if they approve everything, which we anticipate. But we essentially changed everything the way they wanted it changed. Also, um, I received five letters from students from our grade school, uh, addressed to me with, with concerns and, uh, questions into our water system and how things work and, and how we're trying to move forward. Rather than, uh, responding to them each individually, I talked to their teacher and, uh, the mayor and I will be making basically a field trip to the grade school this week and have a little question answers session with, uh, two different classes of children to hopefully answer their questions and, uh, get them to understand why we do, what we do and when we do it. To be honest with you, I'm kind of, it's exciting to, to know that that generation's thinking about things like this, you know? I believe sixth or seventh, I believe. Other than that, we're been doing some measuring and whatnot for, uh, we're going to do a lot of ditch work this spring, summer, a lot of culvert work. And we're planning on renting a mini excavator to get a lot of this work done in a timely fashion. So that's pretty much what we go on fighting mother nature and her wonderful snowstorms here lately, so. That's what we pretty much got going.
Anything to add to public works or any questions for Matt? Tricia was not able to make it tonight. She did have some handouts for everybody. Did everybody get a chance to see that you receive those? You have to see deposits from, uh, last month and this month. The statement of inter fund transfers made for December accounts. And then a, the treasurer's report for the fiscal year ending May 31st. Did everybody get those copies, Tricia? If there's any questions for the finance committee, if not, uh, you look over the, uh, the year end treasurer's report. If you have any questions, direct those to Tricia. Anything else on that? Moving on to new business, uh, Mr. Bob Brock is here to speak about our health insurance. On the other floor.
Hello, my name is Bob Brock. I'm from Brock Insurance Group. And, uh, I want to back up just a little bit before I get into the renewal. Back in, uh, 2018, I was asked to come in here and evaluate the health insurance and you guys were with United Healthcare. At that time you had a $500 deductible with 2,500 out of pocket, a good copay. I was able to come in with the best plan that Blue Cross Blue Shield offered, the Platinum Plan, which is a 250 deductible with a thousand out of pocket. We were able to save the city that year thirteen thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars. Then last year, at renewal time, again, approaching 4-1-2019, Blue Cross made it really easy for me again. We came in and they reduced the renewal. So we actually saved the city four thousand twenty-three dollars off of the annual last year. So that brings me to this year. Now this year, it's been a little bit tougher. I know you guys have already seen the numbers, okay? Looks like we got hit with about a twenty-six, twenty-six percent increase, okay? So the first thing I do is I look within the Blue Cross Blue Shield, but I also look outside the Blue Cross Blue Shield. I look at where you were with the United Healthcare, also look at, uh, the Health Alliance, which is another great player in this area, and see what we can do. And one of the things, if you take a look at the, uh, United Healthcare, the first, just this gray one right here. This one right here. If you take a look at this, these are some of their better plans. These are Platinum Plans. There's a thousand dollar deductible. It has 2,500 out of pocket. You guys currently have 1250. If you look at the $500 deductible plan, it has a thousand out of pocket, okay? Including the 500, so that's 1,500. And again, you know, it's a great plan, but if you look at the monthly premiums for the members covered, you know, both these plans exceed the renewal that we received, exceed the 26%. You know, you're looking at $6,090 for the $500 deductible, you know, like $6,077 for the, uh, for the thousand dollar deductible. We can renew, I believe, at 54 with the current plan that we're under, and that's at a 26% increase. Um, next I'd like to see what Health Alliance is doing. They're a good company, okay? So when I looked at them, they, they have some different type plans. They have HMOs, point of service plans and PPOs. So I just chose two of the plans that are on the spreadsheet up front. On the back, I highlighted those two, but I presented all the plans because they put them on one sheet. But if you look at Health Alliance, they have a $500 deductible plan on an HMO, but it has 3,500 out of pocket. So again, it's a lot more out of pocket than when everybody's used to paying. That particular plan's coming in at $5,032, so just two or three, you know, hundred dollars less than where we can renew with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Uh, but a lot more out of pocket. If you look at their PPO plan, okay, this is one of their best PPO plans. It's a gold plan. It's a $1,500 deductible. And that's got, that's got $7,500 out of pocket for an individual, okay? That's a lot of out of pocket. Of course, the, the premiums are 4615, there's a reason. That's the expense of the, the member that's holding on to the plan, okay? So looking at, looking at those options that are outside the Blue Cross Blue Shield, it takes me back to the actual Blue Cross Blue Shield. One of the things that Blue Cross Blue Shield offers, and I'm going to have a spreadsheet for this. It'll make it easy to do a comparison, okay? If you take a look at the spreadsheet that I've got here, the very first plan on this spreadsheet is your current plan. It shows the 250 deductible, the 1250 out of pocket. It shows what our current premium is. Our current premium is $4,023.30. If you go to the next option, which is option one, which is still your current plan, same exact plan, but it shows the increase. You're going 5,471.58. Okay, that's that 26%. One of the things Blue Cross has done is they developed a different network. And the network, I ran by some of the members here, uh, that have this plan right now. It looks like it's going to fit for them. But they offer a plan with a different network. It's called the, it's called the Blue Choice Preferred PPO BCE Plan, okay? If you have an individual plan in the state of Illinois, everybody that has an individual Blue Cross Blue Shield plan has that network right now. You cannot get it on an individual plan, so it's not, it's, it's been out there. They've transitioned it into the, into the, uh, group plans now. And if we were to move into this, this is identical to the current plan you have, except for you have to work and live in the state of Illinois and use the doctors that are in this network in the state of Illinois, okay? If you take a look here, if we were to move into that plan this year, you know, although I can't save you the 13,000 or 14,000 or the 4,000 like we did before, we can almost break even this year, okay? And almost take no increase at all. The total monthly premium is 400, 4,341.96. Right now you're paying 720 a single. It's going to 723 a single to go with that network. So that's almost a break even for the year and everybody can stay with the current plan.
Can everybody stay with their current providers?
We've checked it out. I met with everyone here, ran it by them, said this is what I wanted to present, you know, when we got to this meeting. And most of them agreed after looking at the network and looking at how many hospitals were in the area. Give you an example, there's 22 hospitals within a 50 mile radius of the PPO. There's 22 hospitals in a 50 mile radius of the BCE network. The thing that reduces is your family practices and these type things. So the example would be, let's say there's, uh, 900, uh, primary carers in a 50 mile radius. With this one, there's 500, okay? I asked everybody in here how many primaries they use and they all said just one. So, I mean, that's a lot of primaries that you can choose from if your provider was to leave that network. And again, this is something new that's going on. In the last two or three years, almost all my groups have moved to this plan in the state of Illinois. Except for the ones that live on the border. They live in Alton, Illinois. If they live right next to St. Louis, they want to make sure that they have a 50-state network, okay? The example too is if you were with Health Alliance, let's just say Health Alliance offered us a, a, an opportunity that was outstanding. It's the same thing. It's a regional network, state of Illinois, Iowa, a little bit of Indiana. You know, you have to stay within that network, live in that area to receive those benefits and discounts. So this is something I wanted to present to you. Now, if you look on the, the back page, not only did I highlight your current plan on top and the plan I'm proposing on bottom. Of course, Blue Cross Blue Shield offers all kinds of plans. But what I'm trying to stay away from is you guys got a, you've got a valuable plan, you've got a valuable crew that works here for you. I'm trying to keep you in the best plan possible for the members that are under this plan to keep them from having to reach in their pockets, having you, keep you from reaching in your pockets as, as the city, as well as keep them from having to reach in their pockets and digging down that out of pocket. So with that said, I'm proposing that you guys make that move this year, add that plan and we can move everybody over to it and you'd almost have no increase for the year. So we can almost, for three years in a row, be able to, you know, reduce costs for the city, you know, again. Because we would have stayed where we were at, we'd be paying additional $19,000 this year. Of course, this is the reduction of the 14, the 4,000 last year. We're breaking even this year, but the, the real savings is, is where we came from to where we're at. So I think we're still looking pretty good here, you know? No, no, I don't know what's going to happen next year, so we'll just evaluate it again next year, take a look at all the plans, sit down and see what we can do, so. Any, any questions? Got anybody in the members have any questions?
Darren, what's your thoughts? I hate to single you out, but. As we do for the thing, so. I don't see any problems with it as long as they're confident and happy that their, their current doctors are in the network, the providers. Otherwise, it all looks identical.
We put him through his paces when he had his meeting with us.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, is my doctor there typing in? Yeah, he's there. Is my doctor there?
That's the thing.
Things feel a lot more comfortable.
Yeah, we went through the whole, I wouldn't have presented it without going through those motions with the eyes. And the other thing that I do know, uh, uh, all my groups are moving to it in this area and it almost fits like a glove in this area. You know, my three or 400 life groups, you're going to find four or five people that have to switch doctors when they move into that. But when I get into the smaller groups, it seems like everybody kind of doctors locally and, and generally their doctor has got on board and gotten in that network. This network has grown in the last few years. When it first came out, it was a little smaller. But it's grown actually exponentially in the last two or three years to make it, to make it really, uh, worth everybody moving over to it, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So, yeah, and they did put me through the ring.
Now, if there was any type of care that was, uh, to be reached out for in terms of leaving the state of Illinois, whether it be somewhere in St. Louis or in the interest of Houston, that would, that would not be covered.
Okay.
It'd be in or out of network.
It'd be in or out of network, but the first thing is that some of those physicians will be covered outside of the state of Illinois. You just have to, if you're traveling outside of the state of Illinois, it's an emergency. It'd be no different than being with Health Alliance from another carrier. That's true, always treated as in-network. But there are physicians, if you're, if you're wanting to go outside of Illinois, you've got to do your diligence. And you've got to call them. It's called Blue Card. You even have it on your card right now. It's on the back of your card right now. It's called Blue Card. And you should be able to find a physician outside of Illinois, as long as they're in the largest PPO network with Blue Cross in that state. Not all of them will be, but, but a lot of them will be. You'll be able to find one in-network if you have to go outside the state. And I'm not saying every single doctor you're going to be looking for is out there, okay? And you got to do your diligence and you got to make sure your doctor does the right thing and gets you where you need to go. Primarily it's live and work in Illinois, use the doctors in Illinois. But you get to that point, you know, there will be some that will be, and can be used out of network, so, okay? Now, like I told these guys too, if you are seeking treatment out of Illinois right now, every single day, and you're going there now, you don't need to move to this plan. You need to stay under the current plan. We can offer both plans. We can offer both plans, and you guys could work out a difference here with the city if you chose to, okay? The difference in the premium, you know? So I'm suggesting adding this plan to what you already offer, not terminating the old plan. Everybody may move over to the new plan, but you'll still be offering two plans, even though someone may not be over on that plan at this time. It was to have two vehicles. And if you were to hire someone that needed care, you know, pay into your organization that was already seeking someone at the Mayo Plains, or the MD Andersons, or a doctor in St. Louis, that they can move right into that current plan, and if you guys wanted to work out the difference in the premium given, you could. So I'm saying, offer both plans, let these guys make the choice on what they want to do, and they can find it if it just looks pretty good right now for everyone here. No one's seeking and seeing doctors outside of the state right now. So it's just another way to offer, you know, the Blue Cross to your organization. One thing I want to bring up that I brought up to some of the members here, too, moving forward with these increases, generally, Blue Cross Blue Shield with the plans on this back page that have the out of pocket are probably going to be ten to fifteen percent cheaper than the Health Alliances and the United Healthcare's moving forward. I can't guarantee that next year. But with Blue Cross Blue Shield, you can offer three or four or five plans. So in the future, we may get to a point where we want to say, here's the four or five plans we're offering, here's the one we're paying for, you guys pick and choose what you want. That's for the future. I'm just pitching the future. But for right now, I'm saying, you know, add this plan for now and let the members move over to it and get yours to it, so, okay? That's all I have right now, so.
Questions for Mr. Brock? Any employees anything to add, or?
Perfect.
Thank you very much. Time, guys. One of the things is, is in the next couple of weeks, we have to turn in a form to add this plan, and then I move everyone over. That has to be done before the end of this month. So I'm not sure when the next meeting is, next Tuesday or the next Tuesday?
We'll most likely take action on it tonight.
Okay, I just want to throw that out there. I didn't want to lose the opportunity to add that and make that move. All right, thanks, everyone, so.
I would entertain a motion to add the, what did I say about the P five E two BCE PPO network?
Yep.
As a choice to the city's health insurance in addition to the current plan we have.
Hold up a motion.
Motion by Tim.
I'll say.
Second to Mr. Neville. Roll call, please.
Chairman Emmerich.
Yes.
Max Evans.
Yes.
Neville.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Mo.
Thank you, Mr. Brock.
Thank you.
I do not have an item for a business district appropriation at this time. Laura, is there anything that you would like to add in terms of economic development?
Tom asked me to mention the next few weeks, we will be putting together a steering committee to discuss a need for a daycare within the community of Mount Plaski, so that is on our three dollar right now. And our next meeting is March seventh at nine AM at the Courthouse Foundation office.
Any more questions on economic development?
If you're interested.
We have five or six.
How did you make any progress in this endeavor to move this store location?
Not to my knowledge, nothing's changed, still in progress. Another term, in terms of economic development, on a procedural note, Tim contacted me about stepping down as a city liaison. I told him that was fine, and so I will be the city liaison moving forward as a part of that board. And the terms for the board are up in July, so at which time of, we will put out, about a month or so before, we'll put out an ad to see if anyone else is interested to submit a statement of interest, in which, after that, we will elect seven new or retain the current seven board members. Proposed principal loan payments. Seemed like that was a pretty hot topic last time. Is there anything to add, or are we moving forward with this, or what's everybody's
I think we're pretty much in agreement with that plan except for reallocating some of the, not for the superpayment, for the general funds. I don't know if you want to wait until Patricia.
I'm okay with what Derek has proposed.
She wasn't at the last meeting either, and she's not at this one, so if everybody would be more comfortable having her available for questions, I'm okay with that.
I think it's not a changing thing.
Nope.
No, it's good.
Was there any questions on the sewer surcharge of the four dollar thing? Forget the loan payoff.
I am in favor of keeping the surcharge on there. I don't know if we have to do something different, because I know our water system is not completed by any means, and there are repairs from the, I just think it'd be easier to keep it on there if it's not a big hassle instead of taking it off and then putting it back on again, and even possibly hiring it, because that's fine.
That's where I ended up at. To me, it seems silly to put it back on in a year or two and deal with the citizens backlash, right?
Even though, I mean, if that's what we're going to do, it's fine. Clearly said we would remove it once the loan was paid off.
More documentation.
Asking for it?
Yeah, I asked for it last time.
I was listening for that, you did not. So here's the resolution that says.
When the loan is paid in full, surcharge will be deleted from the monthly sewer bills to give you the rest of it, but.
Split it to that.
Would've been nice to have that before tonight.
Could ask it any time.
All right. So clearly, the surcharge then is settled. If we pay off the loan, we have to remove it as it's all.
What's Jordan's opinion of that?
It was a resolution passed by the city council. We have to write it. We have to remove it as it said, and then make a new one to add it back on. Sorry, Jordan, go ahead and answer the question, please.
I am not, I've not been briefed on this issue right now, so I'm not comfortable giving an opinion without looking at anything. If the board wants me to, I'm happy to, but I don't.
Well, that's where I'm happy. We'll get you a copy of that resolution before you read the next one. So any more documentation for the surcharge? I don't think there is any, but we can focus on that for the next two weeks. I have questions ready for Tricia that we would like to discuss, and we will put that on the agenda under Old Business for the next meeting, Proposed Principal Loan Payments. I have a couple of things. Somebody approached me about doing a city newsletter. It would basically just be like, basically modeled off of what like L Card does. If any of you would like to talk to the Village of L Card, it's just, I think, maybe a front and back page. Basically just says kind of what's going on. There's really no articles or any highlights really. It's just a matter of, you know, calendar of events, stuff like that to keep the people informed about the events that are going on that don't regularly go to the website or don't regularly get on social media. It was my wife Julie that talked to me about it. She mentioned the fact that if this was going to happen, you know, this is all up to the council, that there would be, that she would have, you know, used to the copier and our computer and stuff like that. We'd be using our equipment to do it, and there would be a fee for her to do it. L Card pays their person that does it fifty dollars a month. That is up for discussion because that is obviously your guys' call. So I was going to get everybody's opinion on that.
I'm holding the favor of that. I think last time we discussed doing this, like finding somebody to do it.
Right, now we've got someone stepping forward and said they'll do it, so.
Please, if you need that source of information.
Right, and, you know, she'll come up with a draft of what it'll look like, since it's got our letter on it, we'll be able to look at it, prove it, see if it fits the format that we see best, so, okay? We will move forward with that.
What would the distribution look like?
She was planned on putting it at certain business hubs, you know, Casey's, Farmer's Restaurant, City Hall, obviously, places like that. The distribution would not be by mail. It'd be more of a pickup, pickup free at certain places throughout the town. Yes.
Are you going to email that out as well?
We could email it, absolutely. We could email it if you're already on the, or start a new mailer. And it'll be posted to any social media. And added to the website. We had talked on economic development with the high school about some sort of communication, but it was tricky, very tricky.
When you have music every year, too.
Yeah. Well, maybe, you know, if we could at least get it started this way, and then Julie decides she doesn't want to do it in the next six months, maybe like, hey, this is the format we've used, we've had success, then we can approach the high school. Or maybe that time someone will be interested in taking over once they see the finished product, so. It's a good idea to think about the journalism.
There is, yeah, yeah, and I talked with a couple of teachers, and Mrs. Keeler was one of them, and it was towards the end of the year, so I think students may be checked out, so. We all, as far as economic development, too, there is some locally that's looking at starting up a paper, just to keep in mind.
Marla Blair, correct? Does she have any more information on that other than what I know? She's looking for a place.
A place here in town. She's wanting to start as soon as possible. She's got her budget figured out. She's just looking for a place to have a face for her business, possibly somewhere up on the square, but I haven't had any updates.
Just that I think she had entertained using the courthouse office, and I don't think that was going to work, so she's looking for a different location.
Yes, Baller.
And on the information that would go on this newsletter, who would feed that to her? Where would it, who would, you know, be able to give her that information?
Basically, anyone that wants to, you know? If the churches want to reach out and put something on there, they're more than welcome, any citizen, any club, group, the school obviously would be very much involved.
It wouldn't fall on you to?
No, it would not fall on you.
And I just was wondering if, you know, if, you know, it would be a ton of people being able to, you know, say, here, put this in there, you know? Or is it going to be one or two different people saying, you know, there'd be contact person that would get in touch with Julie? Yeah, I just was curious, so.
That's a good question. We'll probably have to iron that out as a, as a, as a, as a. Okay, we'll start moving forward with that as best we can. I hereby set a zoning meeting, which has been requested of me for March twenty-fifth at six thirty PM here at City Hall. By the next meeting, I will have a better, we'll have the agenda posted by the twenty-fifth of February. I'll have a better agenda and a better idea of the, yes.
What time is that?
At night, six thirty PM, March twenty-fifth. It's a Wednesday. Mainly, what needs to be discussed and brought to the Zoning Board of Appeals is the discussion of restrictions on the recreational use of marijuana, anything regarding the three percent sales increase on the recreational marijuana, and possible rezoning of North Marion Street, where they have started the community garden, and where Tom has rented out some of his ground that is currently zoned agricultural residential. So there's a couple of things to look into to that. I'll probably have Jordan do some work for me regarding that before the meeting.
I've got the three percent sales tax ordinance already drafted.
Do you? All right. We'll have that, we'll have that, so. At the night, we'll have that at the next meeting then. Any questions on the zoning meeting? Like I said, I got to set the date because we have to put out a thirty-day notice, and I'll argue with you in the next couple of days. We have till the twenty-fifth of February to post it, so. Other questions on that? Any other business?
Our recycle center has all changed, right? Like they came in at our last meeting, sold all of our old stuff, right?
Yeah, so what was your question? I'm sorry.
Did we ever send anything out publicly to everybody?
No, but I, I have, Sandy said like today or yesterday that it was like three quarters full, so after talking with Matt Bobble today, he just said, let's just go ahead and get it emptied. But I do have that list from Kenny or Eric, whichever one, and I just thought I would send that out, and maybe if people had questions on what the plastic, the different types of plastic, that was my concern, but I, you know, I don't know how we're going to monitor that, but, yeah. No, I will, I'll try to get an email sent out tomorrow.
And then we can say that it wasn't our fault. They let us know three days before they decide to change the program.
I planned on doing it, I'm just, a lot of other, yeah.
They'd said early on that when they brought the dumpster, they already have signage right there on.
He's getting new signage, too, except for the dumpsters.
It said they're supposed to be bringing that at some point, so, yeah, I'm just not sure.
It's fully on us.
No.
And we couldn't do what we can.
I think most of the good stuff goes in there at night.
Maybe, yeah, maybe just, bright lights, trail camera.
Did they, did they take, did they move the old dumpster, the art dumpster?
Our dumpster, we've moved and.
Last Thursday, it was empty.
Camouflage and everything else you can think of did.
Good.
I did talk with them guys when they, when they brought that, when they brought that roll off, ours was still sitting there. They'd already removed theirs, too, and hadn't dumped ours. I don't know why they didn't dump ours first and then move theirs, too, but we finally did get ours dumped before we moved it out. And I instructed him, you know, we put rock down there. I said, when you dump the one you got, set it back on that rock, so, you know, people can walk around the darn thing, you know, you step in with it and everything else. He said they would, now whether they will or not, you have to be determined, so.
Seems like there's some turnover in our contact from time to time, too, there.
I think, yeah, overall, with that company.
Person that we've had as a contact since we've started it, since we got away from the Logan County thing.
Correct, so the guy now is Kenny Holt, is, yeah. And so we've got his number, but I think between Andrew, talking with different ones, I've got a number to call to empty it, and so I called this afternoon, well, it was at four thirty and they were already closed, so I'll call them tomorrow to empty it because it would take a two-day turnaround before it gets emptied, so maybe they can get it emptied on Friday, hopefully, so. And then just try to stay on top of it, moving forward, you know, just when it gets three quarters full, call and get it set up to be dumped, so.
I agree, especially with two days.
If anybody comes up with a use for our dumpster, or wants to buy it, or somebody wants to buy one, I see that as sitting down there for ten years from now.
Do you have any foreseeable use for it at the current moment, Matt?
Not really, because when we have garbage dumpsters already established, you know, at the street shed and out behind City Hall that we use for our waste, so, and this one's considerably larger, I don't perceive it's really had any use for it. The only use I might think that we would have for it would be something that would revolve around the ball festival. But even then, we rent toders and roll off to the comedy for the trash.
And you have to have it emptied if it got full again.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just don't, I don't really have a use for it at this point.
Do you remember how big that dumpster was? Was it? Okay. Any further discussion on that or any other business?
Matt, the garbage from the courthouse, there's a garbage can on the west side of the square. Is that supposed to be picked up there by the workers? Or does that need to be taken someplace else?
We take care of that.
Okay.
My guys.
Okay.
Now, we obviously got it emptied last week before they had their birthday party up there.
Right, because we had a lot of garbage on Saturday. That's what we took out, and I said, well, where are we going with this? It gets picked up.
I told the mayor when he asked me about it, I says, you know, we pay a lot closer attention to it in the summertime, because there's obviously more people out about the water. I told the mayor, when he, when he asked me about it, I says, you know, we, we pay a lot closer attention to it in the summertime, because there's obviously more people out about walking around. So that being like that, but it's on us, I mean, we should have paid a little closer attention, but, yeah, we take care of it.
So, is there anything we can do at the council or something to possibly attract a company, a garbage disposal company that offers a recycling service to town?
We can pay them.
Compiling a list that all bases are in the same place last time we talked about it.
Yeah, so the towns that do do that, they like contract, and then they force all the citizens to do it, and then they charge the citizens directly, like on their water bill or something.
Uh, Village of Findlay last night, um, they, they submitted, you know, they solicited bids from companies and Advanced Disposal is gonna sign a contract with the Village of Findlay. To basically do exactly what Andrew said, so you, you, um, you have an ordinance that says everybody in the city has to have residential trash pickup. Then as part of that, you, you can, you don't have to, but usually you do sign a, you know, exclusive licensing agreement with one of the major companies. Advanced Disposal happened to be one of them. Um, and then, yeah, the city bills it through water, or gas, or the utilities, and the city's responsible for. Collecting those bills, enforcing late payment, things like that, and Advanced Disposal at least does have recycling service if you want it for an extra fee, so.
That was, that was the obvious option that I was trying to avoid. Yeah, I just didn't know if there was something.
Right.
Send out a survey or get some people to commit.
Is there a way to not to choose to not have it, or like you?
They can't force on everyone.
Can't force on everyone, but you, like you said, you, you pass a resolution where everybody has to have service, garbage.
Right.
So no one can be exempt, right?
I did reach out to Advance so many months ago, just when we were having different issues with the, the recycled dumpsters getting emptied. But at that time, the one lady said they didn't offer recycling for our town, you know, on the same level that area was doing it, so I'm just not sure if there's someone else we could. Reach out to that would, you know, do the same thing as P D C, but, you know, just not where it's gonna be extra work on all of us. Same service we're getting, just a different company, but I don't know.
I would imagine that the fee would be close to the same.
Yeah, probably, and I don't think there's other companies, surely, so.
Does Findlay do, just have a contract for the whole town, and then they reimburse themselves through the water bill? No, so they-
Yeah, each person's own-
Have an individual account with the garbage vendor, then this is administered through the city, if I'm understanding correctly.
Correct.
So the city is billed, the city gets the bill from P D C.
Correct.
And it is up to us to recover any costs we choose to.
Correct, yeah, usually, the, Advanced, in this case, recommended a small percentage increased, you know, for administrative costs and things like that, but.
It's what Latham does, everybody, everybody has a tote, and it's on your water bill once a month, like fourteen bucks. But that way, but that way, everybody has somewhere to put their trash, and you got nobody putting it in a dumpster, or.
Yeah.
I like it.
That's-
But they don't do recycling that I know of.
So it's fourteen bucks a month, then?
Yeah, if you ever take.
Yeah.
I would guess Springfield, but I'm not here on it yet.
Yeah, we're gonna be right around the north end of Springfield.
Yeah.
They are an option, but there's gotta be a reason, I'm sure.
And who, who's the provider, uh, Latham dug?
I believe it's Viola.
Viola.
I think that's what's on my bin. I don't know, that's just what I think is on my bin.
Yeah, so, 'cause that's what Viola used to be here, and now it's Advanced.
I think that, I think that there's different companies that come in, I mean, there's P D C, there's Area, which might be the same thing, there's Advanced, and there's Viola, I think it just depends on what there is and chooses. I do not think we franchise that specifically to one particular company. I don't think we have that right. Like how we franchise, like to Comcast, whether they're the sole provider.
Be the same way for-
Be the same way. We would.
I think another problem-
So how would that work, we would just tell them if they want to do business in this town, they would, they would have to try to sign a franchise agreement, or if that's something that they would request of us?
Yeah, they would request it of, of you guys, it's for a certain term, um, five years or whatever, um, starts off at a certain. Price point increases each year by some per, four percent or something like that. So, they, they're locked in for five years as the city's trash provider.
Okay. That's something to look into as well. That sounds like a good idea, because.
Yeah, you'd have to, yeah, pursuant to the rules, you'd have to solicit, solicit bids to the extent you can get them. At least give people the opportunity to pitch their business.
That would, uh, that would also limit the amount of trucks in town. It'd be, you know, that'd be one garbage truck per, like, per month, that'd possibly be three.
I think one issue I think might be a problem, oh, I'm sorry.
You'll go ahead.
One issue would be just with different, uh, the renters that would be moving in and out of different locations, you know, I. And I guess if it's part of the water bill, that sounds better than a separate bill, so I think it's doable, but, yeah, just the rental, the renters turnover, but, yeah.
That's a good point.
Well, when you get your water turned on, you get signed up for trash service.
How would that work, though? The reason I ask that is, unfortunately, we have some folks that are on that wonderful shut off list from time to time, so. And they don't want to pay their water bill for three months, they don't, they still get their garbage service?
I would say yes. It's up to us to recover any late fees.
Okay. And if we go shut their water up and take their tote, we don't have to weather some. We might need that in a dumpster now.
That's always something we could look into, for sure. It sounds like there's a lot of options out there, just the matter of us figuring out which one we wanna continue with. Any other business? Any public comments on non-agend items? If not, I'll entertain a motion to exit regular session and enter into an executive session to discuss personnel for twenty minutes. Second Phillips, all those in favor, please say aye. Those? Motion passes. Matt, could you please stay for Mr. Presswood, please?
You can stay as there as you want to.
No.
So you would want the, uh, could you put the class for the package?